With liberty and justice for all. If everyone could remain standing for one moment, we can have a moment of silence in honor of our troops who are serving overseas and those who have lost their lives protecting Thank you, please be seated. What's Labor Day? The 2nd?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. First, welcome to the August meeting. First item up on the agenda are the dates for the September meetings. Wednesday, August 28th, 7:00 PM. Board meeting Tuesday, September 3rd. I don't know if that's good for me, that date. Do we maybe because of the holiday? Because August 28th, no one's going to be around school. Do you want to just do it a week later?
Don't we usually do it?
Yeah.
We were talking about this at the workshop. Don't we usually do it?
Yeah.
It's the first Monday after the first Wednesday?
No. Or after the last Wednesday? Is it possible we could do it the following? Like, well, Wednesday is the elec... No, Wednesday will be the 3rd.
Here's your calendar.
Could we either do it, I guess, the 11th? We shouldn't do it September 11th. Can we do it Thursday, the 12th? Is that possible? Does anyone have a problem with that?
No. It's up to you, the mayor or the board.
So you're going to do the workshop the 4th?
When do you want the workshop?
We can do the workshop like the 4th and the board meeting the 12th.
September the 4th for the workshop.
And the 12th.
September 12th.
Okay, 4th and 12th.
I will not be here.
Where?
For which one?
The 12th.
Nope. Where you going?
Savannah, Georgia. Like, every year.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so what do you want to do? You want to do it on the 16th? We can do it on the 16th.
No. Well, what's the 16th?
It's Monday.
No. Sorry.
17th?
Wait, wait a minute. How about the... Why can't we do it September 13th then?
13th is a Friday. I don't know if anyone wants to do it Friday.
Friday the 13th?
I know it says it's girls' weekend, but it's really cool.
Right, so then, what about the 10th?
So you're out the hall next week also?
I'm out from September 11th and I come home on that Monday.
What's the 10th?
So you want to do the 17th? We do Tuesday, the 17th.
What's the 10th?
Tuesday, the 17th.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Tuesday, the 17th.
17th?
What is Tuesday, the 17th? The workshop or the meeting?
We'll do the meeting. The meeting and then the workshop's got to be like pretty good. Let's do the 12th for the workshop. You can't make the workshop.
12th and 17th?
Yep. Is that okay for everyone? Yes? Okay. Moving right along. Tire Department Chief. Chiefs.
Wow, that's late. September 17th?
Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. The only item that I have on the agenda this evening is a joint between myself and Charles from the DPW, which he will discuss under his portion of the meeting. Which is the roof at the...
Can you talk a little louder? Sorry.
Which is the roof at the firehouse.
Okay.
Charles and I worked on it together and he'll speak on it also, along with, I believe, Tom's going to comment.
Sure. Thank you, Chief. We have a public hearing, but I don't think it's 7:45 yet.
I know.
Right, so, okay. Culture and Recreation, Kathy.
God, Jesus, we've got to make better of this. Yeah. I just need one job.
Oh, we skip there. Good.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Board.
Why do you...
Thank you for having me.
That way.
Upcoming events for the Recreation Department are the concert. We're going to have that on August 8th. We have Reflections, the big band. So it will be this Thursday at 7 o'clock at the gazebo. We have the Sufferin' Fire Department Blood Drive this Saturday, August 10th, at the Community Center from 10 to 3:00. August 29th, we have the Senior Picnic. It will be from 11:30 to 3 o'clock at the Mawa Elks. The pool is going to be closing, starting on August 17th, ending at 7:00 PM. And then it's going to be closing for the season on Monday, on Labor Day, September 2nd. And then we have Sufferin' Day coming up, which is going to be September 28th, a rain date of September 29th. At 11 o'clock to 3 o'clock. And I just want to mention as something that's just passed, we just had Clifford Theater this past weekend. We had it on Friday night at 7:00. And then we had two shows on Saturday, and it was a tremendous success. It was a wonderful program and all the children were wonderful in it and the directors. It was a great program. So that was great news for this past weekend.
Thank you.
That's it.
The discussion of this position, did we discuss... This was a discuss of the workshop, Virginia?
Yes.
So we're going to create... What do we... What do you have to do? We just have to...
I sent it in today.
Okay, but do we need a resolution?
We don't need to do anything.
Not to create a position?
No, no, you keep it in.
Well, we just... The resolution. Okay. Excellent. Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Yes, the Clifford Theater was...
Thank you so much for all of your work on that.
Thank you.
It was a great team effort. Everybody did a great job. Thank you.
Everybody did. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I caught the performance Saturday, the matinee was great. They did a great job. And the Community Center looked really nice. They turned it into a pretty nice theater there. It's impressive. Okay, 7:41. We'll skip over. Village Attorney, Terry, is over there. Clark, nothing from the Village Attorney.
Okay.
Police Department.
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Just a few items. I have one addition to the agenda as well for your hiring of a dispatcher. Under the update, just two quick things. Number one, we are sponsoring a K-9 training on August 20th at the Salvation Army. It'll be for bomb training, bomb trained dogs, narcotics, search and rescue, and apprehension. I just want to let you know, we did a training, which I know the mayor stopped up at, I think it was back in June, in regards to K-9 training, and we actually made a national publication, which we're very proud and suffering, a K-9 Courier, which is the, basically, the K-9 magazine for K-9 officers all over the United States. There's a great article and photos of us in here with the training we did on bomb detonation. And what we did was we had a bomb training and firearms training to see how the dogs would react. And it was very loud and our dog did a fantastic with it. So on August 20th, we'll have probably 50 dogs in the villages suffering that day. So definitely wouldn't be a good day for someone to try to do something in town with dogs from all over the region here. So that's number one. Number two, two weeks ago, July 24th, we met, myself, Charles Sawicki, trustee me, and Mr. McClintock and Sam Janavon, met with Mawa officials over flooding issues. Charles and I have been working on proposals and Charles, we were just discussing it. We'll be having some prices very soon on fencing and other things that need to be done to that area to make the Orange Ave Crossing, emergency crossing feasible and practical. So we'll keep you informed on that. Meeting was very good. I asked under appointments that we appoint Records Clerk Typist Colleen Muller from provisional to permanent status. She's been serving in this position. She took these civil service tests and is eligible for permanent appointment to that position, which she has been doing. Colleen, as most of us know, has been a dispatcher for 20 years with us and the entire village resident.
Okay. I'd like to make the appointment of Colleen Muller to Records Clerk Typist. Is there a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Is there a second? Oh, no. She motioned. Oh.
He's second, yeah.
Oh, sorry. You first, he's second. Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Board. The second amendment I'd ask you to make, we just finished up our paperwork today, and I must apologize, I did not have it last week, is our dispatcher, Andrew York, was a very good dispatcher, took a job with the New York City Police Department as a police officer, leaving a full-time dispatching position open. Our civil service list, I took a village residency list, and we're asking the village to appoint Kyle Lynch, he's village resident. He's a dispatcher with the Sheriff's Department part-time, with the Town of Tuxedo part-time, as well as an ambulance corps volunteer, and I think a lifelong village resident. We're asking the board to appoint him off of the civil service list to a full-time dispatcher position pending a favorable background check and clearance from the department personnel.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would like, because I know we're not at that process yet, so...
I'll move it.
Is there a motion? Yeah, a motion to confirm subject to the background check and a favorable determination by personnel and village personnel?
Some vote, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you.
What salary is it? Do you know the...
Ah, the salary is $42,848.
And that's the same salary that his predecessor was getting?
That's correct, because his predecessor was here probably about a year. Yes.
Got it.
Yes. Same salary. And the last thing, I gave the Village Clerk, Virginia, a list of surplus items, which show some police cars, some EPW equipment, and we're just asking the board to approve those. Once they get approved, we will put them on govdeals.com. Lieutenant Poncaski oversees that for the whole village.
Okay, I have a list here. I guess I'll read them off. I guess I'll read them off and that there could be a motion to declare the following item surplus. It's an air conditioning service machine, two radiator flushing machines. What are these? Minimum bids or something?
Correct.
Minimum bid, $50. So if anybody wants it here, you know, raise your hand. Toolbox top and bottom, $35. Gas-powered hand roller, $100. Flink Salter, Flink Salter, I know someone here is in the mood for that, $500. Monroe Salter and sprayer, perfect item for Christmas for your loved ones, $1,500. Clear Span Poly Shelter, $500. 1992 Auto Car Cab and chassis, $3,000. 2008 Ford Crown Vic, $2,500. Ford Crown Vic, $2,000. So is, can I get the...
Sounds like Wheel of Fortune.
So...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Board. Is that it, Chief? Thank you. Okay, now it's 7:45. We're going to have the public hearing on the MS4 to approve the municipal separate storm sewer systems.
Terry, you want to...
Charles.
Okay, and if you want to... Charles?
Good evening, Board and the Mayor. The MS4 is the municipal separate storm sewer system, and it's regulated by the New York State D.C. And we're required to submit a report annually, and that report runs from March 9th through March 9th, or March, yeah, March 9th through March 8th, however you want to look at it. And it essentially addresses any storm water issues that might occur through the village.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Anyone from the public like to come up? Please do.
Hello, Jean Henley, 135 Wayne Avenue. My questions on the report are first, the construction project that is mentioned, there was one project during this reporting period. What project was that relating to?
That's for Good Sam.
Good Sam? Okay. Great. And then... There was a mention here that there was a percentage of projects planned in previous years that have been completed, and it's only 30%. So what constitutes the other 70%? What projects were not included in that report?
Which page?
And 7D, it's page 2 of... I don't, it's, there's 36 pages, but I didn't print out all 36 pages. It's page... I don't know if you want to...
Let's, that's the, there's three, here's Good Sam, and then which is part of the one that's, and that's recently was completed.
Okay.
And then there's the project that, on Wayne Avenue, and the project on Washington Avenue that we're not going to approve.
Okay.
Those swifts have not been approved as of yet. But they were an assistant, went to the zoning, planning, and waters.
So they're still, as of today, they're still not approved?
Right.
Okay. Okay, and, thank you. And then, it's mentioned here that there was one illicit discharge during the reporting period. What would that be? Do you know what the...
Yeah, actually what happened was at the theater, they, their cooling tower was not tied in directly to the sanitary sewer, and was run onto the pavement and subsequently running into the storm sewer. They have corrected that, and we issued them, initially issued them a notice of violation they corrected, and that's taken care of.
Okay, great. Thank you. And it says that there were three storm water plans submitted or reviewed? What were those?
Well, they have the three that...
Those are the threes of the... Okay.
Good Sam, the Wayne Avenue, and the Washington Avenue.
Okay. And then my last thing is, the last question was, does your MS4 coalition have a program to manage goose populations? And you, and someone had put "not applicable." And if anybody lives near Memorial Drive or Foxwood Pond, there is a good population of geese there.
Can you speak louder, please?
I can hear you.
I'm questioning that there's no, there's no issue with the goose populations in the village, and, because this, here it says "not applicable." When the, when the choices were yes, no, or not applicable, I'm surprised that it was not, you know, we do have goose populations in town, and it's very high near Memorial Drive, and the Lily Field is littered, and down at Kukulo is bad as well, so I'm...
Well, just to answer that question, when I was putting that report together, I did consult with the street department, just on my own observations. Oddly enough, after I did file that report, I did notice there are some areas, so moving forward, we might have to take a different approach.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Some vote, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. How do we do this? Okay, is there a motion to approve the municipal separate storm sewer systems, MS4 report?
Some vote, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Charles. Good work putting that together. Okay, we're going to have audience participation. Please come up, up to the microphone and state your name and...
Who's this guy in the front with the glasses and... He's a reporter. It's Paul. Good evening, Roy Chudy, 16 Lonigan Drive, Sufferin'.
Can you pick that up? We still can't hear anybody.
Sure. I apologize. Is that a little bit better?
Keep talking to it from the other end.
Is that a little bit better?
I don't think it's working.
I don't think it's working. I don't either.
Make sure it's on.
Yeah, tap it. Testing.
Is that a little bit better? Okay, I'll do my, I'll do my, I'll do my best. Hello? Is that working or not?
We heard the chief of police fine.
Okay, I'll, I'll just try and speak a little bit.
Well, wait, one sec. Let me see if you can turn them on.
I think we have problems, Mike. What's she doing?
Virginia, where are you going to get the key?
I'm going to get the key.
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead. We'll keep on going if you want to talk loud.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and the audience again. First, I want to thank the attorney, Mr. Rice, for giving me some nice information that it seems that next week the issue will be resolved regarding the park that we're, we've been trying so long to have put into the Squires Gate Committee area. If you, would you know if, once that is resolved, how long it would take for the park to be put into place?
Not my job.
Yeah. Charles and I...
I don't regret playing.
Charles and I were working on that. It might be a little bit longer than what you would like, only because we have the houses at the same exact time.
So, so...
We'll have, I will have...
I know the houses are done in the spring, I mean, September. They said the houses will be taken down September, so hopefully before the snow comes down, the park can come in. Also, unless there's, there's been some kind of boycott on basketball rims and backboards, I, I would, I would hope that they could address that situation for the kids in the basket, who play basketball down there.
They're on.
Yes.
So that would be appreciated if they could put, you know, get something done on that, because every time I come out, I get attacked by the kids in the neighborhood who want to know where their new rims and basket, baskets are. I also want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Clark Osborne, because Saturday, we, through the graciousness of the Town of Ramapo, our group, the small, the Committee for the Concerned Citizens of Sufferin', conducted a tour of the quarry site. And for people to get a firsthand view of the sheer size of it and what we have been trying to get for flood remediation. As you know, everything is stalemated at this time. The developers, who had a meeting with us, canceled it the day prior to and have yet to answer us to do so again. The town feels and that they should not be cajoling or asking the gold scenes to go ahead, and as far as the village is, I don't know what their position is at this time. So we are asking if it's possible, if the village and the town and the gold scenes could have some kind of a communicative process so we don't go through a flooding issue again. As we all know, it's not just costly to the homeowners, it's costly to the village, it's costly to town, it costs insurance, it costs FEMA, it costs quite a bit. So I would...
Roy, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
We actually discussed this at the workshop, and the board had decided that we would like to write a letter to the Town of Ramapo, and I actually prepared one that would, I'm proposing that the entire board, including the police chief and fire chief, have also expressed interest in signing. So if I may, I'll read it to you, and if you have any, it's not, it's just a draft. I'm going to be giving it to all the board members, and the mayor also wants input in on it. So we, this is just a draft letter, and like I said, it's on behalf of our residents. So if there's any input or anything that should be added to it, please, you know, I'd like to hear from you.
We appreciate that.
It says, "Dear Supervisor St. Lawrence and members of the Town Council, we write this letter to you as a united board, fire, and police department with regards to the Tilcon Quarry property. This is one of a series of letters that we have written to you voicing our concerns over the hazardous and unsafe conditions that exist. The letters that were sent from our police chief, mayor, and village board have all gone unanswered, with the exception of one that made promises that were never kept with increased police patrolling and demolition of three buildings, that were nothing less than a very serious accident waiting to happen. The lack of concern on the town, on the part of the Town of Ramapo is unacceptable. On many occasions, our police department has alerted you to the youth presence behind the fences of the quarry, yet nothing has been done to further to secure these grounds. We have had repeated cries for help from our residents, who all too are concerned for the lack of attention to this property from you, the landowners. The Village of Sufferin' has suggested on many occasions that the property be turned over to us, as the property lies in the Village of Sufferin'. Once again, there has been no communication. Our residents have repeatedly asked why the Town of Ramapo would take ownership of a land that lies within the village, knowing that this land could potentially help our flood-ridden areas with remediation for these residents who have been repeatedly devastated by rainstorms and those who have completely lost their homes. These residents have worked hard to afford to buy their homes and raise their families, and it is so sad that the cries for help have gone unanswered by the town in which they live in and pay taxes to. At this time, we must insist for immediate action to have these unsafe conditions to this property remedied. We respectfully, as, we respectfully ask that we receive some feedback to this letter on what is being done, not what may happen in the future. The future is now."
That's, that's, that's good. We appreciate any, any help, anything that's proactive in that way. I know that there's a, an insurance clause in there. Doesn't the Town of Ramapo pay the insurance on that area, which is, I think, a pretty decent amount of money?
$35,000.
So that means the village would, what, incur half of that or all of it? If that's the case, if you get, if you, if they turn it over to you?
If they turned it over to us, they're not going to. They've made it perfectly clear that's not going to happen. That was suggestions that were made earlier, you know, when they, when they took the property over. But they're not going to turn it over to us. Other things are happening that, you know, I don't feel are acceptable.
All right. Okay. I just would like to address one other thing. Tomorrow, the legislator board is having a meeting. And as, I'm sure you're all aware, that our small group has held meetings in the village across the street, and we've invited legislators, village, town, a lot of the different players involved, to see if we can come to some kind of, find a solution for this flooding information and seeking funding. Well, tomorrow, the funding for hurricane repairs and flood mitigation is going to be on the agenda for them. And much to our chagrin, we have, we have learned that $1 million bond to repair infrastructure at the Havestra Bay Park damaged by the Hurricane Sandy storm is a resolution that they're going to deal with and vote on.
That's the Belmar, right? The Belmar, the Belmar area, correct?
I assume that's it.
Yes.
Yes. A $794,000 contract for inspection of the Pascacook Bypass Culvert in Spring Valley. Approving an $8.9 million contract for, for work on the Pascacook Bypass Culvert. Amending the capital budget for a $100,000 project, project on Muddy Creek along Route 304. Another $100,000 bond to cover the cost of work needed for flood mitigation study of Muddy Creek. And a Monday, and amending the capital budget by $50,000 for streaming and bank work on the Spark Hill Creek in Tapan, in conjunction with the nearby Oak Tree Road Bridge Replacement Project. And nowhere, nowhere does anything have to do with Sufferin'. And, and so, I would ask if it's possible, if there could be some kind of representative besides us, because we are going to be there tomorrow to voice our, our concerns, and why are we omitted from this? And it's been well documented, our flooding, that somebody represent the village tomorrow night. So if that's possible, that would be a great addition for, for all of us. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. If anyone else would like to come up, please step up to the microphone.
Jim Genatino, 2 Memorial Drive. On your letter, Trish, I personally would add that if they cannot secure the property, they should consider hiring a security firm.
It's funny that you say that, because in one of the letters that the mayor sent to the Town of Ramapo, one of the responses were that they, the town was in touch with the private security, including reaching out to Avon to see if any security company would take on the quarry. Nothing ever happened.
It's nice that they're in touch, but it's been years.
Exactly.
They got to do more than be in touch.
Right. So that was one of the suggestions from the mayor.[653.81]
...of the town of Ramapo, our group, the small, the Committee for the Concerned Citizens of Suffolk, conducted a tour of the quarry site. And for people to get a firsthand view of the sheer size of it and what we have been trying to get for flood remediation. As you know, everything is stalemated at this time. The developers who had a meeting with us canceled it the day prior to and have yet to answer us to do so again. The town feels and that they should not be cajoling or asking the gold scenes to go ahead and as far as the villages, I don't know what their position is at this time. So, we are asking if it's possible, if the village and the town and the gold scenes could have some kind of a communicative process so we don't go through a flooding issue again. As we all know, it's not just costly to the homeowners, it's costly to the village, it's costly to town, it costs insurance, it costs FEMA, it costs quite a bit. So...
Roy, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
We actually discussed this at the workshop and the board had decided that we would like to write a letter to the town of Ramapo. And I actually prepared one that would, I'm proposing that the entire board, including the police chief and fire chief, have also expressed interest in signing. So if I may, I'll read it to you and if you have any, it's not, it's just a draft. I'm going to be giving it to all the board members and the mayor also wants input in on it. So we, this is just a draft letter and like I said, it's on behalf of our residents. So if there's any input or anything that should be added to it, please, you know, I'd like to hear from you.
We appreciate that.
It says, "Dear Supervisor St. Lawrence and members of the town council, we write this letter to you as a united board, fire, and police department with regards to the Tilcon Quarry property. This is one of a series of letters that we have written to you voicing our concerns over the hazardous and unsafe conditions that exist. The letters that were sent from our police chief, mayor, and village board have all gone unanswered with the exception of one that made promises that were never kept with increased police patrolling and demolition of three buildings that were nothing less than a very serious accident waiting to happen. The lack of concern on the town, on the part of the town of Ramapo is unacceptable. On many occasions, our police department has alerted you to the youth presence behind the fences of the quarry, yet nothing has been done to further to secure these grounds. We have had repeated cries for help from our residents who all too are concerned for the lack of attention to this property from you, the landowners. The village of Suffolk has suggested on many occasions that the property be turned over to us as the property lies in the village of Suffolk. Once again, there has been no communication. Our residents have repeatedly asked why the town of Ramapo would take ownership of a land that lies within the village, knowing that this land could potentially help our flood-ridden areas with remediation for these residents who have been repeatedly devastated by rainstorms and those who have completely lost their homes. These residents have worked hard to afford to buy their homes and raise their families, and it is so sad that the cries for help have gone unanswered by the town in which they live in and pay taxes to. At this time, we must insist for immediate action to have these unsafe conditions to this property remedied. We respectfully ask that we receive some feedback to this letter on what is being done, not what may happen in the future. The future is now."
That's, that's, that's good. We appreciate any, any help, anything that's proactive in that way. I know that there's a, an insurance clause in there. Doesn't the town of Ramapo pay the insurance on that area, which is, I think, a pretty decent amount of money?
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
So, so that means the village would, what, incur half of that or all of it? If that's the case, if you get, if you, if they turn it over to you?
If they turned it over to us, they're not going to. They've made it perfectly clear that's not going to happen. That was suggestions that were made earlier, you know, when they, when they took the property over. But they're not going to turn it over to us. Other things are happening that, you know, I don't feel are acceptable.
All right, okay. I just would like to address one other thing. Tomorrow, the legislature board is having a meeting. And as, I'm sure you're all aware that our small group has held meetings in the village across the street and we've invited legislators, village, town, a lot of the different players involved to see if we can come to some kind of, find a solution for this flooding information and seeking funding. Well, tomorrow, the funding for hurricane repairs and flood mitigation is going to be on the agenda for them. And much to our chagrin, we have, we have learned that $1 million bond to repair infrastructure at the Havestreet Bay Park damaged by the Hurricane Sandy storm is a resolution that they're going to deal with and vote on.
That's the Belmar, right? The Belmar, the Belmar area, correct?
I assume that's it, yes. A $794,000 contract for inspection of the Pascacook Bypass Culvert in Spring Valley, approving an $8.9 million contract for, for work on the Pascacook Bypass Culvert, amending the capital budget for a $100,000 project, project on Muddy Creek along Route 304, another $100,000 bond to cover the cost of work needed for flood mitigation study of Muddy Creek, and amending the capital budget by $50,000 for streaming and bank work on the Spark Hill Creek in Tapan in conjunction with the nearby Oak Tree Road Bridge Replacement Project. And nowhere, nowhere does anything have to do with Suffolk. And, and so I would ask if it's possible, if there could be some kind of representative besides us, because we are going to be there tomorrow to voice our, our concerns and why are we omitted from this? And it's been well documented, our flooding, that somebody represent the village tomorrow night. So if that's possible, that would be a great addition for, for all of us. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. If anyone else would like to come up, please step up to the microphone.
Jim Janatino, 2 Memorial Drive. On your letter, Trish, I personally would add that if they cannot secure the property, they should consider hiring a security firm.
It's funny that you say that because in one of the letters that the mayor sent to the town of Ramapo, one of the responses were that they, the town was in touch with the private security, including reaching out to Avon to see if any security company would take on the quarry. Nothing ever happened.
It's nice that they're in touch, but it's been years.
Exactly.
They gotta do more than be in touch.
Right. So that was one of the suggestions from the mayor.
The issue that I'm going to bring up was brought to my attention several months ago. I haven't brought it up in the hopes that I would hear about it at a meeting, but to my knowledge, this has never been discussed. It's a lawsuit between Doyle and the village of Suffolk in the amount of $301,000 for sewer plant work.
Sorry?
Oh, Doyle, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Did everyone on this board know that this was going on or?
Yeah, this was the lawsuit regarding the, the company that put on the digested roof cover. Remember, we had problems with them all along, the delays going through the winter, they couldn't complete by the date. We changed the date, had a liquidated damages provision. So yeah, I think everyone's...
We received a Federal Express letter.
Letter, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said, Charles.
We received a Federal Express letter, each board member in...
From the, the person that's doing the suit?
Correct.
And that must have been back in January, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah.
My question is, how come the public was never informed that there was a lawsuit? You didn't have to give specifics, but you could have informed us that the village is being sued for over $300,000.
I, I think at the time, no, he was threatening to move forward on a lawsuit.
There's an action pending and we're defending it. You know, there...
No, I'm not denying that you're doing that, Terry. My fact is that this was filed in early 2013. You want the docket number, I'll give it to you.
You know what, I, I don't think it's an issue of heights. It's a situation where we use them and we have a disagreement over how much money they're owed and what they're owed, I think, you know...
What, I mean, I'll be happy to tell you about it. What's the question, Jim?
No, the question is, and, and somebody sent me a copy of the whole lawsuit, so I know what the question is. There's things in here that supposedly were questioned by the village and approved by the overseeing engineer. And, you know, why weren't part of this paid if it was authorized by the, the general engineer on the project? And why, why as village residents, aren't we least told that we're on the hook for $300,000 plus?
You're not on the hook. Let me answer, we're not, we're not on the hook. This is dispute over how much money there is. This is, this is, look, you were mayor, you know there are lawsuits all the time, this is not alleging any improper behavior. We contracted them to do work, they were the bitter reward of the contract, they completed the work, and there's a dispute over how much money they're owed because of provisions including liquidated damages and how we asked them to proceed and, you know, this is a law, this was the first major part of the sewer overhaul and if you remember, we had that, what was it, the cobalts or remember that whole, I mean, everyone was well aware of what was going on. Again, it's just a dispute over how much they're owed. There's no liability above, you know, what, what potentially, you know, they, they were contracted.
What you were owed. There's no liability above what you were owed.
Exactly.
Which is $301,000. It's not like it's $2,000.
No, I don't think...
That could bust your whole budget.
No, I don't think that was the amount.
I have it right here, Charles.
I don't think that was the amount.
If anybody would like... I'd make you one.
But where, where are we with that?
That's my question.
You know, we in the appellate division, we going for a jury trial, where are we?
Look, I don't, I don't want to go through all of the items involved, besides the fact that it's very extensive. There are offsets to a great extent. Probably the heart of the matter is that when a previous extension was granted, the contractor signed a agreement that there would be no further delay claims. And the majority of the claims that are pending are delay claims. So they're frivolous on their face. We have liquidated damages as an offset against the claims that they're making. They owe money to subcontractors, so they can't be paid until that gets resolved. So while there undoubtedly is some amount of money that is owed to the contractor, it's nowhere near, in my estimate and Charles's estimate and the engineer's estimate, anything near that number.
Yeah, that's good, but I don't think you answered Charles's question. He wants to know where we're at.
Oh, we're going through discovery.
In fact, who's handling this for us, are you? Oh, okay.
Yeah, I was aware that Terry's handling it.
No, the, we're going through discovery, that's all.
From what I understand, it's, it's their turn for discovery?
We're going back and forth.
The village has had their discovery?
No.
No?
Village has not had their discovery.
So they've had theirs, but you haven't had yours?
They're producing documents and we're sending out discovery demands.
Okay, it was just curious to me that there was never any mention made of the suit. And we've had other suits where it's been brought up and it's never been detailed.
I, I had it, I believe.
Some like that, if that money's paid out in this budget, you're going to have a huge deficit unless you bonded.
I didn't even answer it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anybody else, please come up.
Such a good boy, Adam. Just letting Isabel go first.
Isabel Hagerty, 4 Parkside Drive, Suffolk, New York. I just, I'm curious, you were having a discussion about the September meetings and did you end up with September 11?
12th and the 17th.
Oh, the 12th and the 17th, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you. Isabel.
My name is Adam DiSavano, I live at 19 Prairie Avenue. I'm here today because about a month ago, I submitted a FOIL request asking for the current up-to-date budget for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. Over a month later, I still haven't received any information on that. I have another copy of the FOIL request asking for the same thing.
Up-to-date, the budget is on the, it's on the website?
No, not that, the up-to-date, the form on what we've actually made for the 2012-2013 fiscal year.
Not what you requested, though.
I went in and asked the village clerk specifically if that was the proper wording. Last time, they said it was.
I think that this is just, right, this is asking for the budget.
Yeah, that's just asking for the budget. She probably missed, it's probably a misunderstanding.
Yeah, it's right online. We can get, we can produce a copy of the budget if you'd like.
All right, because I came in, like, I came in several times last week and I was told that I couldn't get that information at the moment. And I was just wondering why I was being...
Oh, Adam.
I talked with Tom and asked if I could get the information, he told me that I couldn't.
The budget, we'll get you a copy of the budget. If you come in tomorrow, make sure we get you one.
You have it.
Okay.
So, all right, I saw it, because a month later from that request and I came in, I felt like I was getting stalled on it.
I, it's public information, 2002, 2012, 2013.
No, it's not the budget, I'm, I'm asking for what we've actually made in that year, not the budget. I can get that online.
But that's what you asked for.
Yes, no, well, what's the wording I should use then to get the...
I don't, I don't know. I'm not writing the fiscal, I'm not writing your FOIL request.
Tom, what is the wording that I should use?
You can address, you can address the board.
Well, if you don't have the answer, I was gonna...
If you want to come in tomorrow and work out the type of FOIL request you want to make, that's fine. But you gave me a copy here in which what you're requesting is answered. We don't have the ability to read your mind and tell you if there's something else that you want. If this is what you wrote, we'll give you this. If there's something else that you want, you can come to the village clerk's office.
What, I've come in several times and asked Tom Zordan for the specific information and he was told that I was not allowed to get said information.
Well, we can, we can deal with this in the village clerk's office tomorrow.
Well, I just want to know why I would not be allowed to get the most up-to-date revenues and expenses.
Okay, I can answer your question, I'm looking at what you requested here. What you requested here is readily available. If you want something else and it hasn't been given to you, then we will make sure that you request it and get you the right information. That's, that's what I can answer, so that answers your question.
All right, well, then what should I specifically, Terry, you'll be the one asking.
I'm not sure what you're, what you're asking for either.
Specifically, you know how at the end of a fiscal year, you have your actual revenues and expenses.
Adam, come in, fill out the FOIL request. I'm sure Tom will tell you the right wording. If it's an existing document, you're entitled to it, but he does not have to make up documents for you at your request. So any existing document that isn't, isn't under some exception or something, you're absolutely entitled to see. So fill out the FOIL request and, and it goes past me as, as long as it's an existing document, you can have it.
And I'm assuming then that the most up-to-date, like what we spent in each category, would count as an existing document?
I don't know, that's why, that's why I answered in that way.
We're not going over in circles here.
All right, on, on the question, just, just briefly.
Yes.
I've asked for, you know, updates on the budget and I'm a trustee, so I... But the, the village has the capability at any time to produce that. And I don't know, you know, I know what the law is, is it an existing document? Well, it's sort of, you know, I can get, we can give you, or, in, in order, so if I were to ask, I would get a printout from Tom of exactly the budget as of like August 1st or something like that, or a very recent date, which will show, you know, our liabilities and the revenues that we've received and haven't received in that particular budget. Now, my question to the attorney, does that constitute a, an existing document? Well, I'll wait till he finishes with the mayor.
Oh, I think, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, the question to the attorney, does that type of printout of, of the budget as of a specific date, I mean, not as of the end of the fiscal year, but as of a specific date constitute a legitimate FOIL request?
I, I think I'd have to talk to Tom about whether or not it's, it's an existing document or something that can be produced by just pressing a key. If it's something that's that simple, that's one thing. If it involves him compiling things and so forth, then it's not an existing document that's subject to FOIL.
Okay, I think that's a fair answer. If you come in tomorrow...
No, thank you for the information, that's all I was looking for, for this.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Okay.
George Gaverson, 26 Prairie Avenue. Two issues, one is perhaps of maybe deep concern. At the foot of Harmony Park on a corner of Boulevard, and I'm not sure what that smaller street is leading into Harmony Park.
Abbey Lane.
Thank you. There's, there's a rock wall that's part of the property on that corner. There are, something that looks larger than a wasp, dozens of these that are very aggressive. And there's a lot in the news right now about killer bees, of course, we've, we've heard quite a bit of that. I don't, I really don't know what these are. I tried to, to find out through the internet what this might be, but they are extremely aggressive. I guess what I'm really, first of all, I wanted to notify the board and secondly, is there a department within the county that oversees or would check the, to see if we have a concern at this point? Obviously, the homeowner will probably need to be notified of this concern as well. I'm opening it up to the board, is there a Department of Health that might...
I mean, there is a Department of Health, I don't know, it could be the Health Department. We can reach out to them.
If...
You could also possibly reach out to the Board of Cooperative Extension in, in helping to identify the...
Is that, is that something the board is interested in doing or, or should be doing?
Well, that, no, that's, well, yeah, I'm certainly interested, I wasn't aware of the problem, but...
That's why I brought it up today.
Yeah, so...
Is this on someone's property?
You could call, excuse me, you could certainly call the Board of Cooperative Extension and ask them to do this.
Sure.
Because they provide that service to citizens.
All right, yeah.
I assume that they would do it. I was chairman of that organization, it was about 30 years ago, I used to do it then.
Virginia's going to call the Board of Health tomorrow to look into it also.
All right, it'd be great.
I'll tell you what, we'll get in touch with you.
Yeah, just so that there's, there's, you know, there are kids that go into the area, there are dogs, there are people that are going on.
What is that, Abbey Lane and Boulevard?
It's Boulevard, yeah, Abbey Lane.
Great.
The entrance to the, and, and as you're going into Harmony Park, it's on the left-hand side, there's a stone wall that's over there. And I, I wish right now I had a picture of it to show you, it is quite, or even a video. They are quite aggressive, the, these insects. And the second issue really was, for anyone who does any walking or extensive walking in a community, there's a sidewalk, sidewalk issue. And, and it's, in some areas, it's more than just quarter inch or half inch, it's, it's as much as probably an inch and a half where the sidewalk is, is quite a bit, or even two inches, where it's quite a bit shifted over a period of time. I wanted to bring that to your attention, but I also wanted to bring a solution up as well, is that perhaps, because I, because I know budgets are, are stretched everywhere, that perhaps we could have some participation on the homeowner as well as the village in, in correcting some of that.
You see, now, the sidewalks are the responsibility to be maintained by the homeowner, not the village.
And the property belongs to who?
The...
The property, from your property line to the, to the road?
The village, the village owns the property, but the sidewalks are maintained by the homeowner.
So perhaps a lawyer would go after deep pockets in a situation where...
That's not, I know, but I think typically it's the resident. I know that that happened, you know, growing up in my house once, someone tripped on our sidewalk and they ended up suing us, so, I mean, I do know.
So, what about liability insurance? Does the village have liability insurance for their roads and sidewalks?
Sure.
So I would think that a smart lawyer would say, well, if you have liability insurance for that, aren't you really protecting the town itself?
We're one step ahead of them. We, we have a local law that's permissible that basically says it's the homeowner's responsibility and we're not liable. And by using those magic words under court decisions, we're not liable.
And, and is that something that was passed unanimously through the, the residents of the town, of the village of Suffolk? Is that something they would agree to or have agreed to?
Well, the first part, the part that it's the adjoining property owner's responsibility has been on the book, books for decades and decades. The other thing, the magic words I, I referred to, we, we did amend the local law some, somewhere between five and 10 years ago and that required a public hearing, so, you know, whatever input people wanted to have, they certainly had an opportunity.
Okay. And would you say what percentage of the, of the village, really, the homeowners understand that that is their responsibility?
I couldn't tell you.
If you were to venture a guess?
I think it's a pretty common law in most municipalities, so I, I think it's probably general knowledge. I, I couldn't tell you for certain.
Yeah. Because that may need to be revisited, especially since there's been a big turnover of home, homeownership as well. And, and perhaps there's quite a few people that don't really know what you just, you know, expressed to me this, this point. Perhaps we could have it in a newsletter or the Suffolk Times or, but some way of getting the, the message out there so that people realize that part of it. And let me ask you this part too, that if a homeowner does decide to, to, to do something with their sidewalk, is there a, a standard code in which they're repairing that?
Yes, there are specifications, yes.
There are specifications? And is there a permit required in doing that or how does that work?
Yes.
So is the fee waived or is that, is there a charge for that fee for the permit?
I, I don't know. Charles, you may know.
I'm sorry?
Fee? I don't know. We don't know.
Does anyone know if there is a, a fee associated with...
There is a fee when there's a replacement in kind as you speak of. I normally generally, if you're going to go in and replace the sidewalk that's damaged, permit's required, but your fee is generally...
Great, I think that's, that's a real fair way of doing it. That's a great way. All right, I thank you.
Thanks. Okay, is there anybody else? Okay, Department of Public Works, Mr. Sewicki.
May I almost say? Good evening, Mayor, the board. Requesting authorization to transfer funds in the amount of $15,000
Yeah.
From various street department accounts to a seasonal help account. These funds would be used to hire two temporary seasonal labors for three months, not to exceed three months.
So moved. Is there a second? We have to do this local, moving money, yes? Okay, Mr. Falsigliya?
Yes.
Ms. Zabado?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I am requesting authorization to approve a contract for the roof replacement of the fire department hose company located on Washington Avenue. The low bidder is Hayden Building Maintenance Corp., West Nyack, New York. The contract amount is $68,032.
Yes, okay. You've run all these past Tom, there are all, there's appropriations for all of these in existence?
Tom has made the appropriate adjustments.
Okay. Is there a motion to award the bid?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Roll.
Sorry, Mr. Falsigliya?
Yes.
Ms. Zabado?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
I am requesting authorization to issue a purchase order for the replacement in kind turnkey installation of a process return pump station at the wastewater treatment plant. The lowest price proposal in the, is from TAM, that's T-A-M Enterprises, Inc., New Hampton, New York, in the amount of $23,250 and will be charged to the wastewater treatment capital account.
Okay.
So moved, second.
Mr. Falsigliya?
Yes.
Ms. Zabado?
Yes.
Ms. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mean?
Yes.
I vote yes.
I am requesting authorization to advertise bids for the replacement in kind of three UV motors, drives, and control panels. Bids will be due Monday, August 26, 2013, at 2:00 PM.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
I am requesting authorization to advertise bids for the replacement kind of three activated sludge motors, drives, and control panels. Bids will be due Monday, August 26, 2013, at 3:00 PM.
Your motion?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
I am requesting authorization to advertise bids for the replacement of the fuel supply system located at the street department garage. This system was damaged during Hurricane Sandy. This replacement will be partially funded by FEMA in the amount of $12,968.35.
And where's the other portion coming from, Charles?
Well, the, the plan is to, between the various departments, to prorate the, the additional cost. We don't anticipate a great deal more than, than that amount.
But we're prepared.
What's FEMA giving us?
I'm pardon me?
What's FEMA giving us?
Well, it's right down on there.
It's just getting bids, yeah. I just, I just had the question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'll mo, I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
All right, I'd like to add additional item to the agenda, please. I'm requesting authorization to hire two seasonal labors for the street department for a duration not to exceed three months. The rate of pay is $15 per hour and will not include any holiday pay or fringe benefits. The applicants that I am recommending are Mr. Aramis J. Morris of Suffolk, New York, and Mr. Sean M. Scalani of Suffolk, New York.
We make this subject to personnel and, you know, back-
They have already been approved by Rockland Personnel.
Is this budgeted for?
Well, we just transferred the funds.
We just switched the funds.
Yeah, we just, we just made a promise.
You know, I don't know if this is the time. I just want to bring something up. I was looking at some overtime. And it seems like, you know, I mean, I didn't write all the numbers down, but it seems like some of the departments are way over budget. Now, I didn't take a historical look at that, and maybe it's skewed, maybe the two past months, it, it normally goes like that. But I'm looking at, if you keep up at that pace, it's like a quarter of a million dollars over budget.
Well, I'm not sure what department you're talking about, but that's not the DPW.
Definitely not the DPW.
I mean, you know, in terms of quarter million dollars.
I mean, what tends to be is we do tend to run in the beginning of the year higher around this time, the two big times where, you know, obviously when the beginning of the fiscal year are summer vacations and then Christmas holidays. So those are always the biggest ones, July and August, and then-
Yeah, well, that's another, you know, we, we, over the last couple of months, we have taken on some additional projects and, and as the mayor had indicated, we do have to deal with vacations and any sick time, and we still got to get the work done. Uh, that's one of the reasons why I want to bring in these two seasonal employees, so that would, you know, would limit or reduce the amount of overtime that would be necessary.
Yeah, I mean, you understand my concern. You know, you look at that and that translates to like $80 to $100 per taxpayer in the next budget, so.
For what?
Well, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna, it's gonna have some high points and low points, and it's gonna average out for the most part.
Okay.
But again, that's the reason why we, I want to hire these two, two gentlemen.
Charles, I have a question. We had talked about hiring some of the youths. You never took advantage of that?
We did.
Well, the, what we plan on doing with these two gentlemen is putting them on the back of the garbage truck. So, uh-
Now, we, I think it's in the, the people we hired did work, but we didn't feel it was appropriate to use them in the DPW based on their age and their experience.
Oh, is that, okay. Was that your question? Yeah, I think we used them through, in the office.
Well, we did use them.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, the DPW and the building department, uh, you know, we-
More inside the building.
Yeah, we did use them, sure.
That's great. I'm glad that that worked out. True. Yes, we're-
Okay, are there any other questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, Mr. Falsiglia?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Charles. Good work. Okay, village clerk.
We have the approval of the Minnesota Special Board Meeting on May 21st, 2013.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Approval of the regular board meeting of June 10th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
Charles abstains. I vote yes. Motion is carried.
We have a request from Georgie Porje for two tables and two chairs, and it was approved by the code enforcement.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I vote yes. Motion is carried. Suffolk Women's Club.
Yep. And they're requesting to have a fundraiser and it's supposed to run as part of an event which they're looking for, for ovarian cancer, and it offers the symptoms during the months of September. And they want to display ribbons on the different parts of the village.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We had the date there, right?
Uh, they have the month of September.
Month of September, sorry. Uh, all opposed? Motion is carried.
Okay.
You said amend resolution.
Oh, yeah. At the last meeting, we made a resolution to hire one of the boys from the county.
Got it.
But we hired two.
Two, got it.
So I'd like to change that one to two.
Motion to amend the resolution to two hires from the county.
For the youth bureau?
Youth Bureau.
And for your information, they're both working out very good.
I'm glad.
That's good.
Is there a-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Is that it?
That's it.
Great job, Virginia. Finance Department, Tom.
Good evening, Mayor and board. I believe you guys received an email with the schedule of the fire department accounts that we want to move around so we can pay for the fire roof. So I'd just like to get that approved.
So moved. Second.
Sorry, is there a-
Roll call.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Falsiglia?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Abado?
Yes.
Mrs. Corrigan?
Yes.
Mr. Mian?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Excuse?
We have two, two capital projects that we talked about on Thursday that have been fully funded and the expenses have been, you know, fully spent. And I just wanted to have those projects closed out. And those two projects are Project 2011-003, and that's, was for the pumps for the sewer plant, and the total amount was $190,000. So I'd like to get that one closed out. And then another one is Project 2007.004, and that was for UV lift pumps, and that was $30,000. And that has been fully exhausted, and I'd like to get that one closed out.
So moved. Second.[1565.62]